Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 28th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. I would like to officially call this meeting to order and ask that everyone join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as.
We'll do an introduction of members. I'm Jane Reggio. I am from the town of Millville.
Yeah, Keith, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Karen and Vernon, Millville. Oops, sorry Wendy, go ahead.
Wendy Greedsky, Blackstone.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Is that it? Oh, yeah, me. Matt Aaronworth, Assistant Superintendent.
And Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. I believe we received some warrants in the, in our emails and minutes of the meeting of May 14th. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda A for the warrants and minutes. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh, that was good. Moved and seconded, and moved and seconded by Jack and Tammy. Any discussion? All those in favor of Consent Agenda, Agenda A, say aye.
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 Close? Abstentions? Okay, um, we have a school committee agenda item for an early retirement for Unit C. In the past, we have done early retirement option for Unit A, and this year we're looking to provide a similar opportunity for Unit C. And so you should have received from Matt an analysis of what that would mean. And the potential savings to the district if folks decided to take advantage of the early retirement option. But Matt, I don't know, were you able to put some language together?
We did not put specific language together for this evening. Dr. DeFalco and I were talking earlier, and we know that there were some concerns regarding how the calculations were made based on what the payouts would be for different types of employees. So I was going to take another look at it and see about introducing a couple of different formulas to the committee and see what it is that we decided would be the best system for payment.
But perhaps if we could get a sense of the committee's interest in actually putting forward the, the early retirement incentive, and then we can just finalize the numbers. I mean, that would be helpful.
Is the hope that tonight you need any, you want an answer so that you can send out this in hopes to attract, correct?
Well, the problem is if we don't take action on it, then we don't take action again till the end of June.
Right, that's what I was asking.
Little, so, so perhaps we can entertain a motion that says we choose to offer a, a retirement incentive to Unit C, but I don't know if people are comfortable not knowing what that offer is.
That was what I was thinking, Jane.
So let's have a general discussion and just see what people are thinking about it. I personally think we have offered it a lot to Unit A, and I think there's an opportunity, especially in a time where we don't know physically where we will stand next year. If there are people who are considering retirement, and this is enough to get them to give it a second thought and choose it. It potentially will benefit them, and it will definitely benefit the district. Erin?
So I'll just ask a housekeeping question, or do we need a motion first, or are we just?
At this point, we're just having a general discussion.
Okay, so where would this, we already have some Unit C members that are retiring. Where do they stand if we move forward with this?
So we have a provision with Unit A that we would, we would follow that same idea with Unit C. So we'd sit down with our, with our payroll specialist and look at folks that are eligible for it, because there already is some type of provision around, you know, sick time buyout and vacation time buyout and all of that. So we'd have to sit down and look at that to make sure that we're fair and equitable in terms of that piece.
But as we have, as we have done in the past, if somebody has already declared their retirement, then they're not eligible for this incentive.
So my, I'll, I guess I'll start with, when I looked at what was presented to us, as you already mentioned, Jane, we've offered this many, almost every year to Unit A. And I think to keep it fair and equitable, I think, I know we have 10-month and 12-month employees in this unit. I just think we should, fair and equitable across, you know, a 12-month number and a 10-month number. Not based so much on job description, but on, you know, if, if we wanted to do apples to apples, it would be a 12-month buyout or a 10-month buyout. That's just my.
Yeah. My concern with that is that there's such an inequity of pay that I don't know that you could come up with a middle ground number that would make it a feasible enough number to entice somebody at that higher level of pay. It's certainly going to make it feasible to somebody at the lower level of pay, but then as a committee, we aren't necessarily saving, having, going to see a savings that covers that expense. So it's, it's just, it's an unfortunate, and probably why Unit C has not ever been done before, because there isn't, there isn't a good middle ground.
Yeah, I just, I think it's maybe a little unfair to judge on, on the time they might be working right at this moment where they may have, they may have been a full-time position and then had to move around for other reasons or through their years. Whereas if we're not, if we're, if we're not looking at years of service and looking at what they were doing yesterday versus what they've done their entire time here that they're even eligible to retire. I think it, you know, I, I don't think any of the numbers that Matt or Jason shared with us were unreasonable to the point of not being a savings. I'm not talking about changing those numbers. I'm just saying, let's just give two options instead of each category.
Or how about combine what both of you are saying in terms of when I see, when I hear retirement, I, I feel like it's years of service. So some might have put in 25 years, some might have put in 15 years, and Jane, you're talking about that highest step, which is 20, however many years they've been in the district. So if we were to take something like what Erin was saying and say, okay, if you've been in the district between 15 and 20 years, here is a buyout. If you've been over 20 years, here's a buyout, but keep it based off of years of service versus description of what they've done, because I think that was just subjective to whoever's looking at it. So I think there's both, there's two ways to look at that. I think you both have great, I mean, they're both, I understand both of them.
I think there are multiple ways. I would, I would agree completely, and I understand where Erin is going, but I think you're misunderstanding where I am going. If somebody is a, is a cafeteria worker, whether they were that in the beginning or they aren't now, and they're a cafeteria worker and they're making $15, or they're on the upper step, I don't know, I don't know what it is, let's just say it's $20 an hour. And that $20 an hour and their annual salary, giving them an incentive of, of somebody who makes $40 an hour, it's, it's not a, it's not an equal comparison, because the amount that you would give for the incentive, you wouldn't make up in higher, in a difference of hiring somebody at a, at the lower step. The difference in salary level from the bottom step to the top is not significant enough to be in, it's an incentive for the person. It's not an incentive for the school committee. The idea here is to, to enable us to save some funds to use towards next year's budget. And if you do a higher level to make it amenable to somebody making $40 an hour, it may cost you for the person making $15 an hour. Make sense? Am I way off?
I, I know what you're saying, Jane, but if you look at the, the sheet that was sent to us with the buyout amount versus the savings, none of them are, the savings is still there. So, so, so say we went middle of the road and offered 2,500 for the 10-month employees and 3,000 for 12-month employees. The savings is still higher than 3,000. It's still higher than any of our offering.
Yes, not though. Right, but the difference we're talking about is $500 in some cases, or we're talking about, you know, 15, I believe it's 1,500 to 3,500. Is that the spread, Dr. DeFalco?
Yeah, I believe so. Let me pull up right here.
Right, so, so the, I mean, how many people are we talking would be the possibility? I mean, I guess we just don't have, I don't have that information.
I don't, we don't have that information.
The, for information, the spread was 2,000 to 3,500.
Right, so we're talking, we're talking a 1,500 difference in what we're having a conversation over?
I, I guess, I guess the thing for, you know, in the committee, obviously the, you know, decision for the committee to make is we have folks that, you know, are eligible for retirement that work two hours a day.
Right.
Versus, you know, staff that work seven and a half hour, and they work two hours a day, 10 months, versus a staff who works seven and a half hours a day at 12 months.
But some of those workers could have worked 10 years ago full-time. You know what I mean? Like, if we're looking at years of service, it might be, you know, now they're working two hours, but 10 years ago, they could have been full-time depending on what the budget ended up having.
But I, I guess my concern, you know, I guess, I guess the question that I need to ask everyone and get people's opinion, is this an incentive to recognize, you know, job well done, years in the district, thank you very much, and give you a little extra to boost your retirement as you collect your retirement? Or is this an incentive for the school committee to have a savings? Because those are two very different approaches, because then it wouldn't matter what they did 10 years ago. It matters what they're doing now, because we need to save again.
So really?
What, why do we do an incentive?
Why do we, it would be the same reason we're giving a Unit A. We're rehiring at a lower cost. So the, the incentive is there for the savings.
Correct.
None of these buyouts aren't a savings. That's all I'm saying. I, I don't want to start identifying job categories. I just don't think that's fair, but if you look at this, just the savings line, three of them wrapped together, and the top tier of that category is the same as, is it, is it, it would be a $1,000 difference on the buyout.
$1,500, but if you raise, if you, if you raised the person working two hours a day and you gave them $2,500, or whatever you, whatever that middle of the road is, then you have lost the savings.
But you already are if you're putting all three of those, if you're putting a six-hour, 4.75-hour, and two-hour together into one category, the savings isn't, already isn't there on the two-hour employee.
Right.
And, and the way it's presented here, that's what it looks like to me.
Well, I'm reading, I don't know. Anyone, I don't need to speak.
The top savings of a six-hour employee is the same as another job category on that list.
So the numbers that I'm looking at, and I'll just, I'll, I'll just scroll down a few numbers. I'm looking at a buyout of 3,500 versus a savings of over 4,000. Are we looking at the same numbers?
Yes.
Because sometimes I make a click to a spreadsheet and.
Yeah, it's the bottom of your sheet.
The bottom of my sheet has a buyout of $667 and a savings of $1,300.
So I'm looking at my recommendation versus the savings.
We have the same, we have the same documents, Matt.
So just looking at people that were eligible for this year, and I'm sorry, people are breaking up, so I don't know if it's my connection or if it's just the, the meeting in general. But the buyout cost, if, if everyone took advantage of it this year for the people that I had listed, not their names, but their categories, but we know potentially who those people are, the buyout cost would be 13,250, and the savings would be over 21,000. So we'd be saving the district a minimum of $8,000.
And that's based on the recommendations that are sent to us right now?
Correct.
That's based on the buyout category, Matt, or the my recommendation category? Because the my recommendation doesn't account for the two-hour or the 4.75-hour.
That's based on, well, so if you look at my recommendation column, the my recommendation column is based on a specific allotment. So the recommendations were based on X number of, X amount of money at certain categories. It varies between the hours that they work, and other categories, it varies between the months that they work. So that's why I, I tried to come up with a system that it was equivalent across all of the different categories, because an admin assistant, for example, they work the same amount of hours every day, but some are 10-month and some are 12-month. So that, that buyout would be based on a 12-month position. So then the 10-month position would be adjusted accordingly. Other positions, like the cafeteria positions, all work 10 months, but they work different number of hours. So for the cafeteria buyout, I based, here's a number for six and a half hours, and we would prorate that amount for someone working two and a half hours per day.
Got it.
So now that you've thrown out these job categories, I'm just going to ask my question bluntly, I guess. Why would the savings of a para that equals the savings of a six-hour cafeteria worker be different in the my recommendations?
Because they have different vacation allotments, they have different personal days that they're given, and they're on different salary scales.
But the savings column, Matt, lines up on your, on your sheet. That's what I was comparing it to, the savings versus the recommendation.
But the savings is only a saving.
Yeah, in this, in this specific case, the savings on those particular individuals, do those two match up?
No.
I just think that the recommendation, it should just be one number. They're both 10-month employees. That was just my, anyway, that was my opinion on, that was my question to Jason.
But if you notice, so there's the, there's a para position that results at a certain buyout. It results in a savings of X number of dollars, and the cafeteria worker that is at a different buyout level results in that amount of savings dollars for the district.
But we're talking six hour, six, you have one at six and a half, one at six hours.
I didn't list, correct, the, the para, the para position works more hours than that cafeteria position. Half an hour a day. At minimum.
I think, I think you're, there's two trains of thoughts on, trains of thought on this that I'm hearing. And one is that, you know, the, the approach that we took, we looked at, you know, hours and positions and, you know, the calendar, and then there's some thinking around, yeah, but should we just be looking at straight years of service for, you know, 10-month and 12-month? So it sounds like there's just two, we just, two different approaches, you know, that we can take to it.
Well, I, I like what Matt just added to it, and I don't think it's on the sheet. If it is, I missed it, where he gave us the, the year. Looking at anyone that would be eligible, it would be an $8,000 savings even after the buyouts. And I think that's important for us to, to, to consider, but that's assuming people take it.
Sure.
How about some of the folks we haven't heard from? Any feelings one way or the other?
I mean, I'd rather it be rated based on, you know, I, I like the idea of including how many hours a day somebody works at this point rather than going back through their whole career, or if we could figure out a way that's, I don't want to be inequitable to any particular individual, but it should be, we should be saving money without, I mean, I don't want to screw anybody, but I want to save money, you know? So anyway, we can do this where it's fair to people, but the district gets to see a savings, because that's our intention. That's the way I want to do it.
So I believe in the, in the handout that you have, my recommendations were listed off to the right, and you'll see each category with the buyout number and what that buyout number is based on. So for example, the custodians is based on seven and a half hours. There may be custodians that work less, less hours regularly. The paras are based on six and a half hours, which is the maximum amount that they would be working. That would be the maximum buyout, and many of them only work three hours a day. Kindergarten paras work specifically set lower number of hours. As I mentioned, the admin assistants, it's 12-month versus 10-month. They all typically work the same hours. And the cafeteria workers, again, goes back to the hours. I can come up with a couple of different formulas for calculating the, the buyout amount. One of the reasons why this isn't a straight formula with the top buyouts is because it looks strange to, I, I wasn't sure we wanted to start a top buyout at, you know, $2,742.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, yep.
Can I, may I ask a clarifying question to what Matt just said?
Yeah.
So, um, the, the, under the, my recommendations column, paras are based on 6.5 hours. If you have a para that's working 3.0 hours, is that money, that num, the dollar amount change for that three-hour person?
Correct.
It's just not listed here?
Correct, so I, I think I.
So that would be listed, if you were, if, if, if we voted to present this to folks in the district, it will be clear if you're a 3.0-hour person versus a 6.5 hours versus a 4.75 hour, that you have a different amount than this person. Because I think to Jane's point, that's where you're going to get your savings is, is when you, unfortunately, you start nitpicking that area. If you just give a flat amount, you, you're not going to save what you want to save, and quite frankly, we need to save.
Well, and, and I think to Matt's point, I think where we all misunderstood this graph was that it was prorated based on the top hour. So, so the 12-month, that's, the 12-month person would get the 2,500. A 10-month person's going to get 2,250 or whatever that works out when you figure out what percentage 10 months is of 12 months. 10/12, whatever that is. But, so, so it, it makes sense if you knew that piece. But to Erin's point.
Do we have any paras that are, that are less than six and a half, Matt?
Yeah, we have kindergarten aides.
Kindergarten paras.
And Jane, just to clarify, you, we don't have, we need to do this now versus later, right, basically?
So, so my sense is that we need to, to approve something now. I mean, we have one more meeting in June, but it literally gives people, you know, two days to decide before the new year. And I don't, I don't know, you know, enough about the Massachusetts retirement system to know how long they have to, you know, give their notice and file their papers and, you know, I, I don't know. But I, to me, when's our next meeting? June 20-something?
We have a June 11th meeting.
Oh, well, I mean, potentially.
I think, I think you need to act on it. I think you had mentioned something, Jane. You had just mentioned some type of motion if we all agree upon. That sounded like you, Matt, could go back and make, you know, I don't know, check out the formulas based off of the discussions that were just had and get back to us. But I think, you know, I think it definitely needs to happen sooner than later.
I was going to say, I, I agree. I think you may want to just vote to authorize the administration to create this incentive buyback, buyout program with a maximum buyout of X amount. So if we want to set a limit, and then we know that as Jason and I go back and, and we review possible different formulas, we're not going to exceed a certain amount for any one employee category. And certainly, it's a given that there has to be a savings associated with it across the board, otherwise it wouldn't be acceptable.
Matt, I just have a question, and will some of these, if they take the retirement, they could be possibly not, we, we may not replace that too. Is that correct? So let's say we are, we're not in need of a para, or we may need to cut in the budget. I hope I'm not freezing, because my computer's bad, but.
You've done great.
Okay, if, if, that's still a savings if we're, if, if that person retires and we don't fill that position as well. I mean, I, I don't know the answer to that question right now, but I know how the state is going. So even though it's an $8,000 currently, that's, that's just my question. It may, it may be a savings because we're not in need of that position in the current time as well.
Correct.
Yeah, that's possible, Wendy, for sure.
So Matt, I'm going to push back on you a little bit, because I think one of the responsibilities of the committee is a financial fiduciary responsibility. And just to make a motion that says, we approve a, a retirement incentive without a little bit of specifics, I'm not 100% comfortable with. So I do think if we're going to entertain a motion today, we need to, to come to some kind of consensus with something that's comfortable for folks.
So do you want one of us to make a motion with number, with amounts in it or limits in it?
Either.
We just haven't, whatever you're going to put forward for numbers to the committee, we haven't run those numbers yet.
It hasn't been calculated.
Just enough.
I mean, we already know with what's in front of us, there's an $8,000 savings.
So honestly, if we, we said no higher than 3,000 for any category, it would be, it would be a higher savings, correct? In the, in essence.
Actually, 33,000?
3,000.
3,000. I was like.
With no, with no offer higher than 3,000, I'm just looking at his recommended numbers, and I was just, I was going to say, I, I just feel that instead of having four, four buyouts, we should have just tried to look at two. But we need to give Matt time to do that, to give us a savings, or we prove it differently, I guess. I don't want to mess up the savings. I'm not, that wasn't my point. We, we clearly need it to be a savings.
We clearly needed to.
Not to, not to, not to go under an $8,000 savings within the formula that's given? Is that what you're saying?
But you can't, you couldn't do that, because you really don't know that people are going to take advantage of it. And so what happens if they take, the person who's at the lowest that gives us $200 advantage? You know, she's, she or he is the only people to take advantage of this. You're not going to see that. You know, your 8,000 assumes that those people are going to grab it and, and go. We have no idea, you know, no. Because some of these people may not, you know, they may be thinking, I got another year, I've got another whatever, and, you know, not, not even planning for that. So I don't, you know, there may be no, no savings. But to your point, Wendy, I think there, I think the fact that it may free up positions is very important. So I, I do think that something needs to go out there.
Trying to do some quick math while everyone's talking, so.
And I think, we all know that it's an incentive. This isn't something that we're forcing people to take.
Correct.
I believe that Matt and Jason have tried to come up with an equitable formula, but like many things, it's really hard to come up with the perfect algorithm for determining these things.
So I just moved every person to 3,000 or their number based on 3,000. So even if you, if you look at the cafeteria line, you can see clearly that that goes down by hour. If I move that to 3,000, the, the bottom individual would, there would be a $21 savings to the district in the end.
$21 total buyout?
No, 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 savings.
No savings. But that's, that's at the, 3,000 is at the high, that's at the higher end of your recommendation, right? I mean, that, that's if everybody in unit C, we gave one single buyout. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I was just, I was going to suggest a lower amount from what you had on your recommendation for our 12 month employees, and then somewhere in the mid-range of what you had on there for the other three categories. So say it would be a max of 3,000 per 12 month employee. And then, where do we go from there? The, the, we have 2,025, so, and then a $2,500 for 10 month employee? Or would we go lower? Or does that burn us?
Erin, I don't, again, I, we could, we can look at this all night long, but I just don't think you can say 10 and 12 because again, 12 month custodians get paid a whole lot more than 12 month administrative assistants. I mean, they just do. Fair or not fair, they just do.
Yeah, this, the scale that I presented was trying, although admittedly not perfectly, it tried to factor in the pay scales and the maximum amount that the individuals could potentially be making, and that includes differentials too. So that, that was the, the basis of my recommendations. But again, as I said, it's, it's not to a T where there's, there's a specific formula. Otherwise, the numbers would be much different.
Except the only one that can get overtime in these is the custodians, correct?
No.
No.
All unit C members are eligible for overtime. If there's an opportunity for them to, to have it.
It's just tough because you don't know the numbers. Like you don't know how many people are at the top. You don't know how many, I mean, we just, you're hoping that, I mean, I know you guys know, but I mean, the conversation could go anywhere based off of the numbers. So what do we need to do, Jane?
I'm, I'm still waiting to entertain a motion. If, if someone wants to make one, I certainly would be amenable to accepting Matt's recommendation, assuming the proration based on hours in that category.
I'll make that motion. How do I say it? Motion to approve Matt's recommendations for unit C retirement buyout? Good.
Can I add, just add to her motion?
Yep.
With, with the understanding that there'll be pro, prorating of.
Based on the hours.
Based on the hours worked that are shown in the, in the left-hand column.
Those are, for clarification, my recommendations do include the basis for the full.
Yep.
For the full amount.
Is there anybody who would like to second Sarah slash Tammy's motion?
Do I need to repeat that to make it legal?
I will, I will.
Megan.
So it's been moved and seconded to accept the recommendations of a buyout for unit C based on category of employment and hours of employment prorated based on the hours that a person is currently employed within that particular category. The buyout would be $3,500 for a full 7.5 hour custodian, $3,000 for a six and a half hour paraprofessional, $2,500 for a 12 month administrative assistant, and $2,000 incentive for a six hour cafeteria worker. And again, that would be prorated based on the amount of hours or length of time that somebody is currently employed. Is there any discussion?
Tammy, you're muted in case you're trying to.
Oh, no, I thought you raised your hand. I, I, we discussed, I discussed.
All right.
I will, I will say also, I know that we want to make sure that we're doing right by our employees. And I did have conversations with, with some brief conversations with Julie, the president of unit C. And in all of our conversations, any of the, the numbers that I threw out, she was thinking were very generous to begin with.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Good to know, that's helpful.
All right, hearing no further discussions, all those in favor of offering a buyout incentive for retirement for unit C based on category and level of employment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes, one.
Okay, got to go back to my agenda here. Um, that's it for us, and so we'll go to Dr. DeFalcone Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see all of you as always. We have a couple of just updates, brief updates this evening. First, our COVID-19 update. We're just going to quickly highlight a few different areas within the work that we've been doing the past 10 weeks and, and what some of that work may look like moving forward. The first, we have had a return of our staff. As you know, the custodians returned to work about two and a half, almost three weeks ago, all custodians, and have been hard at work and actually already delving deep into some summer projects and trying to get a head start on some of that work, turning over locker combinations, all kinds of different things. This week, we had our administrative assistants, our cafeteria staff, our leadership team, although they had already been working in the building a bit. All of those different classifications came back two full days this week, and then the rest have been remote. And we are in the process of filing with the governor's office, the, what is referred to as a COVID-19 kind of return to the office form, so to speak. That just outlines the provisions, the safety provisions that we've put in place to keep everybody safe while they're here. I will say, you know, that is one of the strengths of a smaller system in that all those classifications are fairly small. So there's certainly the social distancing piece of the work is, is fairly easy at this point, which has been, which is good. And I will tell you that the staff members that I have been visiting with six feet apart with a mask on are really happy to be here. So it's really good to see folks. And again, they've all been working, but now they're actually back in the building two full days, and then remote, of course, the rest. And it's looking as though we're going to leave this provision in place at, at least through the end of June. We are obviously waiting on the governor's guidelines, and we'll, we'll adjust as we move forward through the month of June. We'll keep a very close eye. And we are also being very, very mindful of our staff who are juggling a lot, like our parents are juggling, and trying to help kind of keep everybody, you know, balanced the best we can and driving our work forward as hard as we can. So happy to have the staff back in that capacity as of Tuesday of last, of this week. Summer planning and supports of students. So we have, we're very excited to share that we have been in the throes of planning some summer tutoring and working with our instructional coaches on really kind of leading the charge with that work with our principals. And it's really great because we've looked at our ESY programming for our students of special needs that qualify for that. And through, through Jill, our director of learner support services, we're looking to expand that summer programming for students of special needs and pull in as many of the kids as we can, as many parents as we can get on board, to really work with them specifically around IEP goals, summer work, which we're doing of a different this year. I'm sure the committee will be happy to hear that. And running parallel to that, we are running a tutoring program for, you know, our general education students that need the extra support or want the extra support in looking at putting in place a couple of hours of tutoring a week. And doing a few different things, looking specifically at those power standards that we need to ensure we're teaching, but also working, we're hoping families will see this as an incentive because I do know that some families are probably waving the white flag saying, you know, crying uncle saying enough, you know, this has been a long stretch, and it has. I, I do respect and understand that. So as an incentive for that tutoring, we're, we're going to put in the summer work piece too. So hey, let us work with your child for a couple of hours a week. Not only will we work on some of those power standards, but we're going to get that summer work done too. So parents don't have to worry about that. So at least we're trying to take that piece off their plate as well. So we're excited to be putting that together. The coaches are hard at work creating those grade level lists and working with teachers and identifying existing resources like iExcel, Myon, some of those programs that we've already invested in. And really jazzed about this piece, looking at how do we use the literacy program that we're going to be launching in the fall with all kids, specifically for those kids that we're trying to kind of close and narrow those gaps, instructional gaps in, so that they get a jumpstart. So they will be comfortable with the program, with the platform before we even hit September. So we're trying to get a bunch of bites of that apple in terms of power standards, summer work, and introduction to our new literacy platform. So the kids that are, you know, are struggling will have an opportunity to get exposure to that, and families that want to opt their children into, or child into that will have an opportunity to. We're not certainly just limiting to that. But, you know, it's all going to be gauged on, you know, parent participation. Yeah, and willingness to do that. And, and I, you know, for any families who are listening, I want to say right up front, I mean, I get it, I really do as a parent, I get it too. It's a real tricky balance. It's how I lost my hair in the process of all this, in case you folks hadn't noticed. It's a really, it's a hard balance. But so we're trying to figure out a way that we can incentivize that a little bit and try to help parents out over the summer so we can stop as, as much of that learning loss that's happened and give kids a leg up for the fall. In addition to that, again, if, in case families didn't see their email update from me last week, if they're listening now, we are continuing our food program. So we will be feeding all of our families as we have been through the month of June, July, and August. The delivery system might change. My sense is it probably will, so I would ask for parents' patience as we reorganize that. We may need to go back after school ends to the community sites that we started with. It might be the only feasible way to do that, so we're still working out the details, but we're really excited that we're able to offer that, again, breakfast and lunch for that seven day a week spread to at least, again, take that stress off the plate of our parents and families and try to serve the community the best we can with that. And shifting gears to the fall 2020 return and recovery. We have been, and I'm saying a collective week is my sense is everybody has been reading and watching and just absorbing as much as they can from various news outlets and media outlets and trying to get a sense on what does it mean to return to school in the fall? What could that potentially look like? We've been doing the same here, as you know, at the leadership team level. And today, we had our first return and recovery team meeting that can, is comprised of Jane and Sarah from the school committee, our leadership team. We have leadership from unit A, from unit, leadership from unit C, so our teacher and our personnel support bargaining units, nurses, we have three nurses in our group, and we have three counselors on our group. And so we have a pretty diverse group, oh, not food service directors, we had a pretty diverse group of leadership. And while the meeting was kind of clunky because we held it like this, and I'm not well-versed in Zoom, unfortunately, way better versed with Google. So I think everybody saw very quickly one of my gaps, and I kind of fumbled my way through the beginning of that, trying to figure the Zoom thing out. What the team didn't know is I actually couldn't even get into my own meeting. I had to call Dan, our tech consultant, and say, I'm stuck, help me get into this meeting. He said, oh, well, you need to wait for the host to let you in. I said, I am. In full transparency, I have a lot to learn with Zoom. But, so what, but what we were able to do was start some very initial conversation around the, the remote learning piece, what's, you know, what, what has worked, what hasn't, and start delving into some things that we really need to be considering and thinking about when we think about reopening in the fall. I'll, I will say the feedback from the group at the end was great in terms of a lot of good conversation, a lot of good dialogue, but it's just the beginning. And we just didn't have a lot of time today, which was, which was okay. But I think one of the most powerful takeaways that I had from that conversation, and would love to hear from others that were part of it, you could tell people have been really focused on this because the group discussions that were happening just were, I mean, it was instant, they were happening in most groups, they took right off. So you know that there's been a lot of thinking, a lot of reading, a lot of studying, a lot of conversation kind of outside of this group. And we're, you know, we're excited to see where this group will go. I did have a communication with our commissioner of education via text message earlier in the week regarding, you know, when will we get more information? Our team and BMR is up and running, and so the sooner the better. And he shared that hopefully we'll have more, a better sense of, of what the department will essentially not leave to the local level, but will say definitive, like this is the plan for these categories or this bucket of things, and then here are the things that you can figure out at a local level. So there's a lot of urgency for me to make sure that we get that information sooner than later, so we're spending or planning time wisely. Because as you know, at this point, it's been, it's been, you know, a bit of a struggle with that. But I, you know, I don't know if anyone else that was part of that conversation wants to share anything. I can pause there.
Sarah, did, Sarah, would you like to share something? Oh, you're muted.
I know, I said, if I can unmute. One of the things that we discussed was how much is going to be left to the district to decide versus how much is going to be dictated by the state? And that's just going to be a wait and see for now. It was really great, I was in a small group with the school nurse. And she spent a ton of time, obviously, doing research and looking up best practices. And I just think it's going to be really important to bring all of the stakeholders within the district together to talk. And then eventually, I would like to see input from the community, I guess, from parents and maybe, and students as to what has worked best and what maybe needs a little bit of improvement. So that's all I've got. It was a good meeting.
It was a very good meeting. It was very energetic, people really gung ho to participate. I think in my small group, everyone spoke, everyone, not, you know, nobody just kind of sat back and listened. So I, I think it's an exciting opportunity. And again, it's trying to plan the unknown, and that's impossible, but we learned impossible things can happen.
Yes, we did.
We've seen that, I think we saw that with the lunch program. I mean, that is one of the things that, I mean, in my opinion, you could be a model for how we've ruled that out, for how you've ruled that out. And we're going to have to keep doing stuff like this, so we'll figure it out.
During, may I ask a question, Jane?
Yes, of course.
During that time, one of the things that kind of keeps rolling through my mind, and unfortunately, I'm in a position where I'm sort of watching two different states decide what's going to happen next and what's happening now, as well as three different districts, which I might end up losing my hair also, Jason, trying to keep up with it all. But one of the, you know, and I think we all see this even just talking to a handful of friends, is that there, there are very much strong opinions on both sides of, you know, the mask or no mask, the social distance versus no so, you know, this whole thing as a whole. And I hope that when you all are talking about this, and I'm sure it will come to the full committee at some point. and I'm sure it will come to the full committee at some point, is that, you know, I really feel strongly that there has to be some different versions for different families. And I don't know how that works. But if, if you're in a family who, you know, I sort of have the COVID scale, the ones are like, yeah, this is all fake, which you have those people. And you have the tens who potentially fear for the lives of their family members in their own home, you know? And so when you have that ten and the one and you're trying to come up with a sound educational plan, one may be, I want to send my kid back full board. I don't care if he wears a mask. And the other may be, I'm not sending that, my kid back and under any circumstances. So how do we educate both without penalizing someone for having a strong belief when quite frankly, the professional doctors and medical can't agree either? So I just think that, for me, that's such a big point that neither, neither set of beliefs are going to be punished in, in their education, in trying to get their education.
I can actually comment to that and as can Sarah because we were in a group together. And that conversation did come up to some extent when we were talking about the timing of schools. We were discussing that it may be a one week on or a one week off situation. And I think it brought to light exactly the point that you're making. We were discussing specifically parents being able to get their kids in on that type of a rotation or not being able to, just downright because of their job, they can't do it. So, I mean, it brought to light the conversation of we need to set up the structures and the protocols and our processes, but within them, we need to have the flexibility to accommodate all of the family's needs and cater to the individual students and families as well. So it's a great point. And I can tell you that the, the committee was already starting to think about that. Not, not stating that we have any answers right now, but we are definitely considering all of that.
I think on that note, and I'm getting, I've been getting, I wouldn't say a lot, but at this point, about a half dozen, maybe five or so emails from parents who are working in school systems and other communities that have said, you know, whatever it is we do, can, you know, please make sure it aligns with where I am. This is going to be too, I don't know how to do this. I'm trying to, and it wasn't Wendy, by the way. I'm sure that it wasn't. But, and so, and I, and I, I really, I get it. I mean, I'm in Tammy's situation where I'm watching two states and my own children are living there in homeroom. There's attendance, there's grades at school. They're in school longer now than they've ever been. Most, you know, my boys finish up their work around 5:30, 6 o'clock, and they're on in homeroom at 8:30. And we get attendance notifications if they skipped homeroom Tuesday. I got a lot of emails from the office. So, I mean, it's, it's a very different approach. I think the key here is going to be that consistency piece because we, we really need to make sure that whatever it is we're doing, we have that. And, and we don't right now. We don't, and that's a problem.
And that was exactly the discussion in our group that while you, while flexibility was a key word, consistency is a key word too. And, and while I feel for every parent that works in a different district, and we have a lot of them, and I feel for everybody who goes across states, and we have a lot of those as well, we have to worry about Blackstone, Millville, Regional School District, what's the best for the students in this district? And we're consistent across our district. And it, and, and it's not, I mean, we have to be flexible in it, but it's not going to be the pie that Rhode Island does or Connecticut does, or, you know, it's, needs to work here. And that's going to be something really hard to balance. But we're going to have to, to Jason's point, be very consistent in our message, in our, in our, our delivery to parents. And we're going to have to be very open. I agree with Sarah. You know, if we can get family student involvement at some point in this, that will be very important.
Yeah, agreed.
I will say with, with all the considerations and even all the opinions and input, we're never going to make everybody happy. So I'm just going to admit that straightforward for folks who are listening, we are not going to make everyone happy. It is absolutely impossible. And we will try to best, to do the best educational value for our money, for our students, because that's what we have to focus on.
And to piggyback on Tammy's point, I think people need to understand that there's no decisions because it's, the state hasn't made any decisions yet. So as soon as decisions are made, then they can be rolled out. But until then, you know, we're all left wondering, you know, what's it going to look like? And we have all these ideas, but we can't enact these ideas or put them into place until higher up breaks down what the expectation is. And, and my only concern with the whole thing is that I really worry about these kids that are going to be at home alone because there's going to be a lot of people. And this is, I'm sure, across the whole entire United States. But I am talking about our Blackstone youngsters that are going to be home alone because their parents now had to go back to work. And what are we going to do to support that particular situation? So again, that's, that's not now. It's, it's further down the road. But again, we have no answers because we haven't been given any answers to roll out. But we are coming up with options and ideas and just waiting for the time where they roll out the ideas from the top. So I appreciate the, the brainstorming and the meetings. But again, to the community, we, we can't make those decisions until we're given, you know, what's expected of us.
What we can commit to is getting their feedback, their input, what's worked, what hasn't. And we don't need to wait to do that either. I mean, we can start collecting the parent feedback, the student feedback now. I really want to hear from the students too in terms of, you know, what's their sense about this and how this has worked for them. But again, you know, I'm on the Commissioners Accountability and Assistance Council. I co-chair with the superintendent from Somerville. And we had a meeting Wednesday, Tuesday, whatever day it was. And it was, you know, the conversation was framed at what does the accountability system look like? And, and there are representatives from all over the state and all kinds of different organizations. And one of the things that came up was there have been so many lessons learned. Some kids have absolutely thrived in this model. And a couple of the parents that sit in this council said they don't plan on sending their kids back to school. I mean, not because of the COVID-19 thing, but they want this to continue. They're trying to figure out a way, how do we keep remote learning in place in our district? And, you know, it did, it did pose an interesting question to us. We have students that are homeschooled. Maybe there's a BMR remote learning program that we put in place. You know, I don't think, we shouldn't be thinking, how do we desperately get back to exactly what we had? If we fight to do that, I think we, I think we lose a tremendous opportunity to say, yeah, how do we get pieces of that back? But how do we make it better? How do we give more options? How do we get more opportunity? So I can, I can tell you that as we start to think about, you know, what this looks like moving forward, and Wendy's, Wendy's right. I mean, we need to, we need to wait to find out what the, you know, this 85% of these big pieces of the structure need to look like. I think we should continue to think from an innovative kind of perspective around this as well.
I think the data is going to drive the instruction, Jason, and I think that's what you were saying. So the more people that share the information, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, the more it'll drive the instruction and the ideas moving forward into the fall. So that work can be done all summer long. And the more people that share this information, the more important it's going to be to use it in the fall. So that's, that work is definitely appreciated.
Yeah, and I would ask the parents that are paying attention. We had over 700 parents take that survey on April vacation. I hope we have the same turnout when we look for feedback on this. It's going to be important. I mean, we really want to make sure to strike the best balance we can.
And I, I do think, Jason, when we ask for that feedback, that it definitely has to be able, families have to be able to, A, be able to do it on a, they have to be able to do it by a child by child basis because for many, the experience, even at the elementary school, I see Wendy shaking her head. The experience at the elementary school of someone who has two or three kids could be extremely different for one or the other. And, and being able to do that individual child one can, can highlight the highs and lows of what that looks like. But certainly, I, I mean, we are all hearing feedback from parents and, you know, what you're hearing at that, the elementary level versus what you're hearing at the high school or middle school, such a different range of concerns in, in what they're looking for. So it definitely, I think, needs to be an individual kid basis. And I, I think sometimes when we do surveys that there's always that one glitch, like, do I fill this out for Johnny or Sarah? And I think we need to be able to do it. Give them the opportunity to do it for each kid.
I agree 100%, Tammy.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that that provision's in place so we can, we can delineate that for sure. That's a good point. And so my last item for my report, shifting gears, is just on FY21. And first and foremost, I want to just kind of outline the fact that, you know, I know that there's been a lot of conversation. I've heard it in multiple groups with very different stakeholders. I know the school committee has, has heard it as well. And, and we've had some, you know, kind of informal conversations and around this. We know there's a lot of discussion about a significant state revenue shortfall issue as a result of having our economy shut down and, and a, you know, a slowly reopening economy for that, for that matter, starting recently. We know that that revenue shortfall will somehow make its way down to municipalities and school districts. I mean, we know that. And, you know, we don't know what that shortfall is going to look like. However, in the midst of this, as you're aware, Blackstone held their annual town meeting on Tuesday. And I do want to thank the community for supporting our budget. I think that that's a really, it's a great sign. And we're so appreciative of the support from the Blackstone community and their voters, their FinCom, their Board of Selectmen and town leadership. We are very hopeful that we'll get the same from Millville. And we are hoping that they will be able to continue with their annual town meeting on June 22. Like, we'll have to wait to see, Jane, I think. But we're certainly, you know, in support of that. And we're part of that conversation last evening with their town moderator. That will really go a long way, making sure that our initial, our FY21 budget that we put forward is supported by both communities so we can continue our planning process. You know, we know that there's going to be a shortfall. We don't know exactly what it's going to be. But we are committed, and again, really hoping that Millville will support our budget. We are committed to not going back to the towns and asking for additional support. We've asked for a budget. Blackstone so far has supported that. We're hopeful Millville will support that as well. And we need to operate within the confines of that budget, regardless of what the revenue shortfall may look like from the state. And so, you know, I want to make sure that I'm clear on that, that we, you know, regardless of that revenue shortfall, we do not have intentions of returning to the, to the communities to ask for anything additional. We will, we will learn and find a way to operate within that. And, you know, although we, we won't know about our state budget until mid to late summer, we're not going to wait. One thing I think our community, and I know the committee knows for sure, we're planners. So, you know, we're going to continue with our planning and we're going to move forward, working cooperatively and creatively with our leadership team, with our school committee, with our union leadership, all the bargaining units, and trying to figure out different scenarios and ways to deal with a shortfall. You know, the challenging piece to this is, and I've been saying this since, you know, I have started a couple of years ago, that our fiscal plan has to match the instructional plan. Well, Houston, we have a little bit of a problem because it did. But now we're not sure what that instructional plan will look like in this new kind of COVID world and the return in the fall. And we've got this potential significant revenue shortfall issue to deal with from the state level. But what I will say is we're going to keep planning. And we're going to come up with different strategies, different scenarios to close a variety of what could be potential revenue shortfalls from the state. And we're committed to that. And the other thing that we're absolutely committed to is to continue to put the best educational opportunities forward for, for kids, for students, the best we can, and to update and keep our community in the know all the way through this process. And, you know, whether it's budget updates or summer programming updates, food updates, fall reopening and recovery updates, one thing I can guarantee you is we will keep people very well informed as we move through the next few months of planning.
Anybody have questions for Jason? All right, thank you.
That concludes my report.
I have just one question, Jane. Jason, you mentioned the continuation of the food service. Did we get additional funds and a grant to do that?
We did. So we continue to write individual grants, which I, you know, share with the committee as we, as we awarded those, which is great. And we did get authorization from the federal program and from the state program that will be able to continue with the reimbursement that we're getting now through the summer, which is really great.
That's great. Turning it over to you, Mr. Aaron Worth.
Well, hello, thank you. I don't have very much in my report this evening. I, the only topic I have is the transportation reimbursement that we have received this year. And just a brief explanation of what's going on. As regional district, only regional districts get regional transportation reimbursements. And typically, the state funds those reimbursements somewhere between 75 to 80%, closer to 75 most years. Prior to this crisis, the economy was doing extremely well. And we were looking at some really strong revenues from Massachusetts. And so people were saying that we might be better off budgeting closer to the 80% mark. So in our budgeting process, I use between a 78 to 79% mark, just to be conservative. And as it turns out, our reimbursement rate is much closer to 84% this year. And what that did is it gave us $120,000 in revenue this year that we were not anticipating as part of the budget. And in conversations with Jason, and hence the recommendation to the school committee, we'd like to take that money now and move it we'd like to take that money now and move it into a transportation fund, which already exists in the district. And by doing that, we'll make that money available to use right from the start of FY21 on transportation costs, just on transportation costs. But clearly, our costs will be over $120,000, so that shouldn't be a worry. But again, that will stop that money from being tied up in E and D and having us wait till it gets certified again in order to access the money. So a couple of points to it. This process actually does go down as an expense for this year against our general fund. So technically, it does raise the, the budget. So if we are to vote on moving this into a separate fund, it's technically taking money from Fund One, which funds the budget, and moving it into Fund Eighteen, which is our transportation fund. And I've been advised by Jay Sullivan from the Department of Ed that we have to note that as an expense, and we have to note that our budget is going to increase for FY20. That being said, we want to be very clear and let the communities know that though the bottom line expense is increasing, the top of the line revenue increased as well. And this means no difference to any assessments for this year or next year. So it has absolutely no impact on the town's contributions. But all it does is, is it will enable us, in preparation for next year, to have some available funds.
So Matt, let me ask you. Yeah, well, clarifying question, and we can talk specifically about that after somebody makes a motion. But if, if in fact that raises the budgeted amount, this has to be signed by Tara and given to both towns?
That is correct.
So I will entertain a motion. Aaron? You're muted.
I'm sorry.
Do we have to recertify? No, 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 no. This is FY20, the one we're in right now, not 21. We can go up? I thought we could only go down. No, we're, we, we can go up if we notify the towns and give them 45 days to either hold a hearing or whatever the case may be, because we're not impacting their contributions. This is that A, B, C, D thing that we added to CMR 304 something, something.
So I'll make a motion to move the money into the transportation fund?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Wendy and seconded by Aaron. I will read officially, whereas our total FY19 transportation reimbursement came in at a higher than expected, I move to transfer the amount of $121,000 from the general fund, Fund One, to the transportation fund, Fund Eighteen. This will allow the funds to be spent on transportation costs in FY21, and help offset any revenue losses for next year, as this is an expense in the general. Oh, I guess we don't. That's all we do. And help offset any revenue losses for next year. Is there any discussion?
I just, can I, I, I was, when I read this the first time, I was just trying to work through it. So it's a, it's a reimbursement from last year's budget that we always get the following year.
It's a reimbursement for last year's transportation expenses.
Where would it gen, if it, where would, where does the, so we budget for a certain amount, and this is above what we budgeted for this year's budget. And so the option is either to go it to E and D or go into the transportation fund, right? And so the transportation fund, knowing that we are, well, not knowing, but guessing that we're going to have a shortfall coming in from the state for next, the 21 budget. I've tried to get it all through. This would allow us to kind of use that for transportation and then free up and, and take care of shortfalls some, some other ways, right? And so that's why it's a good thing, in my opinion.
It's being proactive to make this money available at the beginning of the FY21 in the event that we would need it.
And, and if we didn't do it this way, we would have to wait till the certification of our E and D, and then, and then, so, then go to the towns, then wait 45 days. So this is.
Typically, it goes into E and D, right? And what we're doing, instead of E and D, we're going to put it in the transportation fund.
Correct, and have it available essentially immediately in July.
If, if we were not faced with the potential of any state revenue loss, I wouldn't be making this recommendation.
Right.
Anyone else? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to transfer $120,000 from general fund, Fund One, to the transportation fund, Fund Eighteen, and allow those funds to be spent on transportation for FY21, and help any, offset any revenue losses for FY21. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, hearing none. Motion passes. Anything else, Matt?
That was it. Thank you very much for taking that motion.
School committee, any? Again, a week from tomorrow is the graduation of our senior class. Not the graduation, the celebration, the, what did we call it? Showcase? I don't know what we called it, but celebration. So Tammy, I would like to congratulate Alexa.
Thank you.
Have a full day, and all of her classmates as they cross that stage, some of which tried to do that Monday night at the Blackstone meeting, was quite unique. I wish that we could do different things for them, and we will as time goes on. But right now, we'll celebrate them in the best way we can, and I wish them much joy and fun as they go through that process. Jesse, I assume we have no public folks? I'm going to take that as a no. We do have, our next meeting is July 11th. But we do have an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to move to executive session, not to return to this meeting. June 11th. Which is the meeting that we will recognize retirees, which was why we needed to get the retirees. Jack moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Wendy. Tara?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And Jesse, if you don't mind, can you make Jason the host of the meeting? And we'll say goodnight and thank you to you.